Good evening. Glad to follow this special meeting public hearing to order at this time. We're going to ask you to stand for a moment and sign a prayer after this is celebrated. Ladies and gentlemen. Ms. Williams?
I am the president of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good to see you. At this time, the public screen is also for our school board's statement.
The mission of the Portsmouth Public Schools is to challenge the minds, challenge the bodies, and challenge the dreams of all students while focusing on excellence.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, world.
Reverend Fleming.
Mrs. Hines.
She's here.
Mr. Lamb.
Present.
Mr. Naess.
Here.
Mr. Parent. Reverend Patillo.
Present.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mrs. Williams.
Present.
Mr. Bradford.
Present.
Hayden Miss Brad.
Okay, thank you very much. I call your attention to the general only one, I had one item, that would be item number three A closed session. May for approval as a matter?
Second.
Ms. Williams, blue prop seven W A of our item number two prop, three A, closed session to the general discussion. The flat, full time, I'm glad.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Mr. Mike.
Yes.
Mr. Naess.
Yes.
Mr. Parent. Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Bradford.
Yes.
Mr. Naess.
Okay, thank you. Call your attention, item number two, public junior's superintended proposed operating budget for the 2015-16 school year. Dr. Bracy calling you this time. Also, I'm going to ask that when she calls on the speakers, that the speakers will come up here where the flag is, so you'll be in front because as you can see, our camera's all the way back in the back. So those of you that are going to speak on the public work session, I ask you to come up here and say about the flag. Okay? And Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, Mr. Bracy, and good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. And with the proposed operating budget for the 2015-16 school year, Mr. Steele will present that at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Chairman Bridford, I was going to say vice chair parent, but I guess it's not. School board members, this is the public hearing on the budget. You'll see, for those of you that saw the superintendent's proposed budget and joint session of city council and school board, you'll see a number of similar slides. There may be some additional explanation that I'll provide. Again, this is a developing budget. There are still some steps that have to be completed in the budget cycle, including having some final figures from the city and the state as far as revenue. And there are some details on the expenditures that are yet to come in, so I will be going through those points, and we can go to the next slide. So I am going to talk about the mission vision again of Portsmouth Public Schools because that's what our budget is based on, on those resources that we need to accomplish our mission and vision, talk about the key dates coming up, demographic trends that affects the budget and the budget development, and where we put those resources, the state and local revenue outlook as it looks now. And then I want to talk about the budget highlights that have been put together in this budget, and the statement of needs that the administration has put together to describe what we need to get a quality school district in Portsmouth. And then go over the overview and next steps, next slide. The key dates, you can see the ones checked off already. Again, this process starts back last year, and it's a continuous cycle. And currently, we're in March where a lot of things are happening, and right now, we're in the public hearing on the superintendent's proposed budget. Next Thursday, the school board is going to adopt and approve the budget that will be forwarded to the city. On March 30th, the next Monday or Tuesday, I think, the city manager will introduce the proposed city operating and CIP budgets. And of course, the school district will quickly be looking at what education is being allocated from the city resources when the city manager presents his budget. On April 15th, the General Assembly is expected to do a veto amendment approval session after the governor has taken a look at the General Assembly's conference bills. During April and May, the city council holds budget deliberations. They will also have public hearings on the total city budget. And the city council right now is scheduled to approve the city budget on May 13th. Hopefully, it'll be on track this year. If you recall, last year, because of problems at the state level, that approval date was pushed back. And on May 21st, after the city council adopts their budget, which includes the education budget and any adjustments that were made to our original proposed budget, it'll be presented back to the school board. And of course, we have to have a balanced budget, so we're going to have to meet the final figures that the state and the city has provided us, and that will be adopted on May 21st. Next slide. So again, the mission, most of you that have been with the school are familiar with the mission and state, mission statement, which is just read this evening. Some of you may not be aware, but behind that is a 10-year comprehensive plan, strategic plan that the school district and the school board has. And some of the vision statements that are particularly applicable in this case are highlighted here. But again, our focus is on students and student success, and that's what our budget is based on. Next slide. One of the key performance indicators, of course, is accreditation, and this is something that all school districts struggle with. And this is the latest view of that key performance indicator as it applies to Portsmouth Public Schools. And currently, for this year, we're at 32 percent. And as you know, that reflects the previous year's scoring. That determines this year's accreditation. A couple of the key things that have affected the accreditation, as you know, is the changing of standards on core areas. And those core areas that were new one, new standards that were introduced are shown on this slide, and when they were introduced. And in a lot of cases, school districts have had to adapt to those new standards with new curriculums, and as you know, the rigor of a lot of these subject areas has been increasing significantly, and that's what school districts end up wrestling with. Next slide. Most of our funding from the state is based on how many students we have, and they use a measure called average daily membership, ADM. And here's how it's looked over the last five years. It's been fairly steady. It did dip in 2013, 14. And you can see that in January, it was at 14,294. The February figure, by the way, has dipped slightly, but the figure that's being used as the projection for next year's budget is 14,211, which is up. And to let you know that that's significant for us, because we get approximately $6,000 of state funding for every ADM, so that's pretty significant and affects our budget pretty significantly. And to give you an idea, and another point I'd like to make is, within Portsmouth in 2010, it was shown that we have about 18,000 school-age students in Portsmouth. So you can see how many are going to public education here as compared to that, but you can also see what the delta is. And if you look at 4,000 students times about 6,000 per student, I mean, we're talking about $24 million that the school district's not getting, but that's what every school district is wrestling with. Next slide. Composite index. Composite index, for those that don't know, is a relative measure of the locality's ability to support education. And it's a pretty elaborate formula that takes into account the economics of the city or county or locality. You can see within the Hampton Roads area, the district shown here, we're the lowest. And the lowest means that Portsmouth has the lowest capability to support education. So what the state does is they take that composite index, and they factor that into how much state funding we get. So we do get additional funding based on the fact that we have a lower composite index, but there'll be a lot of those that argue that the formula is not as, it doesn't accurately reflect the true nature of the district's ability to pay for education, and a lot would argue that we should, the formula should be adjusting for that difference a little bit more aggressively. Next slide. Another factor that we have to look at is those resources that we have to devote to children, especially those that are disadvantaged. And one measure of that is those students that aren't free and reduced, or that are eligible for free and reduced-priced meals. You can see for Portsmouth that that percentage has been increasing in the last several years consistently. And that's not just Portsmouth. Most districts are also seeing similar trend. Next slide. Another comparison between Portsmouth and the rest of the districts, and you can see Portsmouth, Newport News, and Norfolk, I mean, they're in the 60s. Hampton's 58, and Chesapeake, Virginia Beach, and Suffolk have lower percent students in free and reduced electric grade. Next slide. This is just to give you a general feel, and it's looking at the current year of where our revenue is coming from. And like I said, most of our funds are coming from the state. And if you look at the state school funds plus the state sales tax, I mean, you're looking at about two-thirds of our money is coming from the state. The city funds account for about a third, a little more than a third, 41 percent. And then we get federal funds in our general fund. We also get some additional federal funds that are in a grant fund, which is part of our budget too, but this is a sliver as it applies to our general fund. Next slide. Okay, so that was the revenues, and here's the expenditures, and here's where we're spending our money. And you can see predominantly, again, as you would expect, three-quarters of our money goes directly to instruction, which is our primary mission. The other parts go into the support of that, which includes technology operations, transportation, and administration. And it shows you the relatively, relative percent of the budget that's used in those expenditures. Next slide. Discretionary spending. About 81 percent again of our budget is payroll. So this district is run by people, and that's reflected in this budget. So we have a smaller percent that is non-payroll, and that includes maintaining the buildings, the technology, and all the support costs that are not people are in that number. When you look at the amount of that money that is considered nondiscretionary, for instance, if we have to always pay utility bills, we don't have discretion unless in the freezing weather, we crank down the thermostat or something. But in a lot of cases, we don't have discretion for a lot of our non-payroll costs. And if we take those out of the equation, we're left with a small sliver that we have some discretion on, on a year-to-year basis. And so this is just looking at a quick snapshot. You could argue that there really is more discretion if you look a little bit longer term, especially on the payroll side, because again, you're looking at people. But this is taking some assumptions, a quick snapshot of what you have discretion on maybe in the very short term. Next slide. This slide shows what has happened to the number of classroom teachers we've had since fiscal year 2009, which was basically the onset of the recession that we had in the nation. And severe cuts primarily to state funding that affected every district. And to adapt to that, of course, because 81 percent of our budget is people, the number of people had to be cut from the budget. So you can see that in this slide. One of the other measures that we like to look at is how it's affecting turnover of employees. And you try to minimize that number, and so we track the teacher turnover rate on this slide too, to see how that's being affected. But you can see 9.1 percent of our teachers, in the latest stat, are turning over. So that's, even 9.1 percent is a significant amount of our teachers that are turning over that we have to find new teachers to go into the classroom. Next slide. This slide actually is coming from a neighboring district that was trying to justify increases to their teachers. And I point this out because it's showing that Portsmouth in the entry level is the highest, and that is indeed true. And it was a conscious effort by the administration in an effort to attract teachers to have a very high entry level, to at least get teachers in the door. And then, as you go through five years, 10 years, 15 years, you can see, based on the pay and classification manuals of each of the districts, and assuming you get a step increase every year, what a five-year teacher would be making, a 10-year teacher, 15, 20, whatever, for each of the districts. One of the things in the footnote here, he says assume step increase every year. And as you know, Portsmouth hasn't. So if you take a look at that slide, and you slid over the 42,000 into the five and 10 years, you can quickly see that even though we may be at the top of the first year, we could quickly become a lower than the other districts as we get teachers with a number of years and we haven't done step increases. And I'll, the next couple of slides will show that even more dramatically. Next slide. So this is the starting salaries, and again, Portsmouth is the highest, and it was the highest in 2009, and it was the highest in 2015. So that relative position with hiring teachers is the same. But look at the next slide. Next slide is average salary. So what we do is we take the salaries of all the teachers within this district, and then we look at their average salary compared to all our neighboring districts. And you'll see, even though we were the highest paying district for the first-year teacher, for all the teachers in the district and what we're paying them, we now become the lowest in the district. So that's basically saying that we've dropped off either by not giving step increases, or if you also look at our pay scale and not having significant increases in the pay scale after the first entry year, and we're not keeping up with our neighboring districts. This may be a little bit hard to see. It's easier to see online, but we were quickly trying to get information from what the other districts are doing, and we're constantly watching what each of us is doing because we don't want to lose the competitiveness with each other. The first column shows their budgets from last year, what their proposed expenditures are. Each district is proposing a raise this year, you can see. And the percent raise varies, and in this proposal for Portsmouth, we're recommending a 1.5 percent and a step increase, but also, there's been a couple other categories of employees we've added on to that that also involve compensation. You can see Norfolk is looking at 2 percent, Chesapeake 2 percent, Virginia Beach 5 percent, although 1.34 percent of that is a VRS catch-up. And for those that may not recall, VRS, three or four years ago, said that employees now have to contribute to the VRS pension plan, and you could take it, you could implement that right away, the 5 percent in the first year, or you could spread it out over a number of years. Portsmouth took it in the first year, and employees were required to pay the 5 percent, although the state did bump up the salary also to cover that at least in the first year. But other districts wanted to spread it out, and Virginia Beach was one of them, so they're catching up. So the real percent is probably, you know, the difference between 5 and 1.34, 3.66. Suffolk 2.5, but you need to look at the footnotes too. They recently had a pay analysis where they were looking at all their categories of teachers and the non-teacher support functions. They're recommending 2.5 percent for non-teaching support personnel. But based on this pay study, they're looking at putting in about 3 million, 3.5 million to adjusting their teacher scales to be more competitive and to adjust for some compression of a number of steps that they wanted to spread out a little bit more. And you can see Suffolk, or Hampton, and Newport News. The other thing that affects compensation, of course, is health insurance. And so this is showing what's happening on the employer contribution and the employee contribution, the percent increase that each of the districts is seeing. Most of the districts you're seeing are trying to avoid hitting the employee with any increase that they're incurred, just like Portsmouth, and having the employer pick up any increase to the employer's share. As far as the percent increase overall for health insurance, it looks like the other districts are experiencing similar increases, and so we're not out of line in that regard. And the last column talks about what some of the districts have done as far as strategies to balance the budget. Virginia Beach is increasing class size, and Hampton is increasing class size. You'll see in our budget, we are not recommending any increase to class size. Next slide. So in summary, right now, our initial budget was put together with the assumption of the governor's budget, because that's the numbers that the state initially put together, what they're going to give to localities and K-12. And the conference budget actually increased what the governor was going to put in K-12. And here are the differences. One is that the conference budget, the House/Senate conference budget, that is currently with the governor and is expected to be signed as is, includes a 1.5 percent raise for teachers and SOQ positions with conditions. The conditions are, one is that the raise may not start till 1 January versus the starting of the fiscal year. The other condition is that it looks like it only covers SOQ teaching positions. And districts typically, if there's a 1.5 percent raise, say, that affects just SOQ teachers, they try to give the raise to all teachers and not have any differentiation between, say, SOQ-funded position versus a non-SOQ-funded position. And we do it likewise with other employers. The conference budget also puts and helps support the teachers' retirement fund by doing a one-time VRS deposit of 150 million statewide, and that puts a little bit more stability into the VRS pension system for teachers, and it's putting it in a good position going forward. The per pupil state funding is up slightly, but not very significantly, and you'll see in one of the subsequent slides that it's not significant, but those are the differences between the governor and the conference budget. Next slide. Wanted to give you a historical view of funding for Portsmouth since 2009, the start of the recession. And you can see how this has changed over time. And again, most of our budget is from the state, and this shows you that we've gone from 151.7 million in 2009 as far as total budget, and even the current year, we're at 139.5. That's a significant decrease, and that kind of supports what you saw earlier about the number of teachers going down and things like that. That's because the total budget has gone down fairly significantly. Another thing I'd like to point out is, these figures aren't adjusted for inflation. So if you adjust them for inflation, that difference is going to even be more significant. The darker colored part of the stacked bar reflects the stimulus that was put in during three years of the recession to help mitigate the negative effects of the decreased federal and state funding. And that did help mitigate it. And you can see, once this federal funding went away, the state funding pretty much made up for some of that stimulus funding, but you can still see that we're well short still of what we had back in 2008 and '09. And some people have done correlations again with that. If you go back to the accreditation slide of where we had full accreditation and where we started falling off. Next slide. The state funding is divided into three categories, and this gives you a little bit more detail on how that revenue comes in. And you'll see, if you compare state revenue to ADM, where that $6,400 figure comes from. On the bottom of the slide, you'll see 52,400,000. That was last year's budget figure from the city, and there's question marks here. Again, we don't know where the city manager is going to fall with respect to that figure on March 30th. So we're looking closely to see where that's going to happen. And again, if you look at between the governor's proposed budget and the original 14, 15 budget, the state revenue per ADM is fairly close. The governor's update went down slightly, but it is back up to about $6,400 per student. Next slide. This slide just compares within Portsmouth, the portion of the education budget, total budget, as it applies to the city total budget. And you can see, over time, revenue has increased with the city slightly, but the school board budget has decreased as a percentage of the total city budget slightly also. It's gone from 34 percent back to the pre-recession time, 2008 and '09, to the point of the current year, it's down to 27 percent. Next slide. So what, as we put together the budget, what is included in the current budget? And here's a list of items that are included that are significant items. We did no increases to employee health insurance. Of course, the criticism, when you give someone the raise, but then increase their employee's share of health insurance, is that it cancels each other out. So we wanted to give a true raise to our board. They preserve current staffing ratios and requirements, and no increases to class size. So we didn't want to change that ratio. In fact, we want, at some point, we're still trying to improve that, but we didn't want to adversely affect staffing ratios and class size. Homeless transportation, that's been an issue the last couple of years because the number of homeless students that we have has been increasing, and the budget that we got through the grant and our own local budget needed to keep up with those increases and requirements, and we cover that in the budget. There's been a lot of discussion with the school board and school parents and schools about supporting the athletics and band more than we have in the past. And as I explained, schools in supporting the athletics and band, up till last year, there was no budget item for athletics and band in the general fund to support. there was no budget item for athletics and band in the general fund to support, and schools had to rely on end-of-year funding, whatever was available, to help them out when they could. What we wanted to do is start building the capacity upfront within the budget, and we started last year. And this year, we've increased, continued to increase the capacity by building the budgets more in athletics and band also. Starbase was discussed as a possible item for consideration for cut last year. We are not considering, it was not considered this year, and it's part of the basic budget. Same with dual enrollment, first college, summer school, freshman orientation, CLE workers, new directions uplift, Porttown Magic and Excel. Those were all programs that are in the budget. Next slide. Here are three major items that affected putting together our budget this year that we knew we had to fund over and above what our current budget is. The first one, we've continued to deal with, health insurance increases. However, I can tell you, the 7% is a lot lower than the double-digit figures that we've seen three, four, or five years previous, so the rate of increase is decreasing. Health insurance for part-time employees. As you know, with the Affordable Care Act, if there are part-time employees that are making, averaging over 30 hours a week, we're required by the ACA law to offer them employee health insurance plan. The maximum liability, if our part-time employees that are currently averaging over 30 hours a week, and a lot of them include long-term subs, and that's probably the primary category, if they took the insurance, we'd opt to offer them approximately, per employee, it's about $10,000 to support that. So right now, we're looking at just eight employees that are in that category. What we didn't have in the current budget, but that we, but that the school board approved starting in mid-year, we actually, it started November 23rd, I think employees saw it in the first paycheck, the first paycheck in January. We did do a 2% employee raise, and we're carrying that forward, so that $1.9 million, we want to continue to support, and so that was put into the budget. Next slide. So we're looking at ways to, again, become more efficient and looking at things we could also reduce in addition to the mandatory increases. So we are looking at closing potentially the DAC facility, and the savings that would be incurred there. We do have some recurring cost of $98,000 that we think we would save, but we also have a 20-year-old HVAC system that we've got to replace, and if we stay there, we're going to have to invest in a big project there to replace the HVAC system. So that's one of the reasons we're looking at trying to avoid that. We did look at a lot of our non-payroll discretionary costs, and we asked departments, non-schools, to take a look at their budgets, and we asked them to look at a 15% cut. We did get those inputs from departments, and that equates to about $700,000. Healthcare costs, we continue to look at reducing healthcare costs. There's a blank there. Our health plan runs on a calendar year, not a fiscal year, and we're looking at the second six months, starting in January 2016, of looking at some proposals that include an onsite nurse and pharmacy program, similar to what Chesapeake is currently doing and experiencing significant savings, not only for the employer, but for the employee as far as getting pharmacy drugs, but also reducing the cost of healthcare. We're trying to nail down what that potential reduction is, but I wanted to put that out there, so everybody would be aware. The print shop closing. The print shop is currently, has been losing money since 2010, and it continues to lose money. There's a number of factors to that, but one of them includes the fact that we're doing more digitally. A lot of our, a lot of the business the print shop has done in the past were assessment tests that were printed out, and a lot of our testing now, most of it now, is all computerized. So a lot of the business and the business model that was used to set up the print shop as an enterprise model has, the dynamics of that have gone away. So the business case is showing that it would be, unless we want to help subsidize the print shop out of the general fund and take money out of the general fund, that we need to close that enterprise fund and close the print shop. Medicaid maximization, that is a blank, and ONG or Dono told me to make it a blank, but we are looking at some initiatives that will increase our Medicaid revenue, that we can get additional reimbursement from the feds on services that we provide for Medicaid-eligible students. And we have some assistance from a consultant helping us on this. And there've been a number of school districts that have very significant increases in revenue on Medicaid that we think we may experience also. Credit card rebate. The rebate that we get, we get, we're using the state contract for our P-card program, and generally, we get about a 1.5% rebate for all our purchases that we use with the P-card. We're trying to, instead of paying vendors with a paper check, we're trying to use a credit card to take advantage of that rebate. The rebate has doubled in the last year, and we think it's going to be continued to increase. We don't mandate that a vendor has to take it, because for only those that take it in their normal course of business. And that's another revenue increase. Next slide. Okay, so going back to the accreditation, we have to make some, propose some initiatives that we think will have the biggest effect on the performance of our students and the performance in the district. And we think investing in people is a big part of that. So as part of the quality improvement recommendations we're looking at, is proposing a 1.5% COLA increase for employees. Again, all these, on this slide and the next slide, were, you'll see, are similar to initiatives that were proposed last year by the school board, and they've been carried forward with, I think, just a couple minor modifications, but they're basically the same list of things that we thought would have the biggest improvement to the district. Adding additional instructional assistance in key areas, paying for holiday pay for 10-month employees for the winter break two weeks. Again, for those employees, that's equivalent to a 6% raise, so that's in addition to the other compensation increases that we're talking about. Additional instructional support, and you can see the areas that we're looking for, additional teachers, additional op support and support staff. And again, in those areas, those areas have been cut dramatically since the recession, and this will restore at least a little bit of that capacity in some critical areas. Next slide. Some of our clerical and some of our security are not in full eight-hour contracts with the district, and some of them are in like seven-and-quarter contracts, and the proposal here is that we move to eight hours, and that will provide not only compensation for them, but also, in a lot of cases, are, those employees are leaving earlier than we'd like them to leave to have full support for the schools, and this will help them out. Academic program improvements, and some of you are familiar with the success of our dual enrollment program, and our effort to also improve the performance of students with the Saturday tutoring. Our substitute teachers that come to Portsmouth, those are the same substitute teachers that also go to other districts, so we want to remain competitive when we're offering a substitute job for a teacher to come to Portsmouth versus another district. And right now, we're below the regional average, and we're not competitive, and this amount would make us competitive to other districts. Prior year cuts included cuts to the academic professional development, staff development for our teachers, and we want to restore that professional development item for the schools. There's been a lot of discussion of having a little bit more or improved program development in athletics, and this particular item would hire a district-wide athletic director instead of having different policies between the schools and trying to coordinate, standardize that. So those items that were above the line were previously recommended by the school board, were not funded in the previous year's budget, but we're putting them back on the table. Items below this line are new since the last budget. The first one is increase the bus driver monitor standard work week. For those hourly employees, for purposes of determining the accrual of sick leave, the contribution to VRS as part of their pension plan, a standard work week is developed. And it typically was based on how many hours on average employees worked. The current standard work week is 5.25 hours per day, and we find the current employees in these categories are probably over seven. So this is to increase the standard work week. Employees will get additional deferred compensation. They won't see an increase in their paycheck with this one. They will see an increase in their retirement pay. They will see an increase in accruing more sick leave. They will see an increase to their eligibility for a higher amount in group life insurance. But that increase in deferred compensation is equivalent to about a 20% increase in benefits for those employees. Next slide. We're also recommending a step increase, which was talked earlier, that we haven't had for a while, and is a major contributor to our teachers falling off of being competitive within the region to become one of the lowest-paid teachers in the region. We're also looking for additional CSEP slots for general ed for, in some cases, students that were trying to find some alternative to some issues that we're having with student performance, et cetera, and CSEP does provide those services. And as you know, we pay CSEP for all the services they provide for both special education students, but also general ed students. We're also, in this quality improvement recommendation, proposing a public information officer position and also a grants writer position. We think, as far as the grants writer position goes, we think the grants writer will more than pay for him or herself in what they do for the district. So let's look at the general fund revenue overview. And again, this is an overview because we still really don't know what the final figure is from the state. We don't know what the city figure is, but let's make some assumptions. If we assume the city is in a fund, level funding at 52.4, and we use the conference budget, or we use the governor's budget as-is, our total revenue that we're going to get is $140,000. And then I've also indicated that if we do go with the conference budget, we would actually get about $1 million more. Next slide. So that, that $140,000, $141,000 was the revenue. So we've just talked about all our statement of needs and what we need, we think, to move the district forward, and this tallies up all those requirements for what's in the budget, the must-fund, the reductions, and then those, all those quality improvements. And you can see, we're coming up with $156 million, which is greater than the proposed revenue that we're seeing. So there's a gap. Next slide. And we've been talking general fund up to this point, and just to remind everybody, we also have funds that contribute to our total budget. So that $146 figure here is now in the general fund, and then if you go down, you can see some of our other funds. The reprographics fund, of course, is going to zero because we're proposing closing the print shop. Cafeteria fund, which is a self-sustaining fund, and the school grants fund, and a lot of that is federal grants. Risk management insurance fund, and our textbook fund. And so our total budget that's being proposed is $174 million. Next slide. So that's our operating budget. So the operating budget includes the general fund and all those other funds I just mentioned, but we also get money for capital improvements. And those are also going to be part of the city manager's budget, so he's going to present a operating budget and the capital improvement budget. And so this pays for new schools, but it also pays for major construction projects that involve new HVAC systems, new school buses. So there's a lot of things that are big-dollar ticket items that it also pays for. Last year, we, the school district submitted 18 projects. We asked for $9.8 million in year one. They asked for a five-year budget, so we give them a forecast of five years. And over those five years, all those projects totaled $31 million. The city ended up funding and approving seven of those projects, and most of those projects weren't funded fully. For instance, they did fund for the engineering work for replacing the HVAC system at Churchland, which is supposed to be estimated at a $12 million project. They paid for engineering work just to get the engineering done for that, so it's not, that'll be a multi-year project, but again, at least three of the projects were just paying for the engineering, it wasn't for doing the projects. They gave us $1.7 million. Of that $1.7 million, $1 million is for school buses, so it's $700,000. So you can see that we have a lot of big projects that we have a big shortfall in funding. For this year, we've submitted 43 projects. Now, in that number includes items that weren't fully funded previous year. For year one, we're asking for $14.3 million. Over five years, $52 million, and you can see it's rising. And so we'll find out with the city's manager's budget, how that is going to come out on March 30th, what being proposed. And so the big concern, of course, is that this number would continue to rise, and we have to find some solution for funding these big projects. Next slide. Here are some of the, here's a summary of the types of things that we're looking at that affect the district, just to give you an idea. So you have the summary here, and I believe as part of the package and attached to the PowerPoint slides, we gave you the detailed list to this, which gives you more detail on the project and in what year it's being forecast to be accomplished. Next slide. So the next step, we're looking for the school board to approve a budget to go to the city next week, and then we continue to work with the city on the best resource strategies to approve K-12, both for the operating fund and for the capital improvement plan. And that ends my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Any questions from board members? Before we go to speakers. Matt, Madam Chair?
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. It's time to get back to basics with our budget. The goal of life is not really space travel, backyard swimming pools, glider planes, entertainment extravaganza, big fast cars, or thrill pills. What human beings are really seeking is individual happiness, self-realization. Human happiness drives only in a certain kind of environment, a Judeo-Christian home. Nothing in this life is ever going to be perfect, but it can be much more gratifying and a lot less dangerous if we get back to the fundamentals that the founding fathers provided, the principles of liberty, a blessing to modern man. Number four states, without religion, the government of a free people cannot be maintained. What does religion have to do with government? Nothing today, because many homes, as well as the public schools, have been secrified to the point where no Bible reading is permitted. The founding fathers would have counted as a series- The founding fathers would have counted as a serious mistake. The lack of biblical teaching in school not only affects students but also employees and staff. Let's look at how staff and employees have been affected. The efficiency review of the Portsmouth Public School Division in April 2005 tells it all. Here we are, 10 years later. We still have problems in educational service delivery, district management, human resource management, financial management, purchasing, facilities management, transportation, and technology. If Portsmouth Public School System used ways to improve division management and operations, it would increase the efficiency in non-instructural areas, and that savings over more than 2.1 million annually noted in the report. Was that accomplished? Some specific recommendation, continue reorganization of the Department of Curriculum and Instruction. Implement superintendent's reorganization of central administration, staff, and responsibilities. Establish base staffing formulas for non-teaching position at each grade level. Put on accurate job description. Eliminate eight bus drivers positioned by scheduling buses to run four routes, each to prevent replacing eight buses. The lack of biblical teaching in school affects students, employees, and staff, and the fact that all our schools are not accredited is an example. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Sye. Dr. Clerk, do we have any more speakers?
Mr. Tyne Muttlow.
Other side, I'm over there.
You can try it from there. It's good, still with that. I'll try it back there.
Good evening, Honorable Board. Dr. Bracy. I'd like to take the time to thank Dr. Bracy for meeting with me today. My name is Tyne Muttlow, and I live in Park Manor. As some of you all know, I'm robotics forefront, trying to push the gears. I talked to Ms. Nelson today, and I would like the board to take into consideration of increasing funding for robotics. For those who have been through the robotics, understand what it takes. We have three mentors that currently get no stipend to spend countless hours with these children. And I find that highly unfair when they are coaching and teaching our students just as our football coaches do or our basketball coaches. I'm working with Ms. Nelson and the mentors to get a budget proposal to Dr. Bracy and to you guys to find out where we can make adjustments. The new robotic season starts in probably the end of April after Worlds. That's when our children need to get on the ball and start going. We missed 16 events last year throughout the state of Virginia for these kids. We only went to one. It's unfair to put our children in front of the rest of the state. The budget, I saw increases, and I'm concerned that, I talked to Mr. Steele, there's increased budgets to sports and band, but there's no numbers. How do I know, as a parent looking at the increases, what you're increasing from? Same thing with all the other increases. There's no transparency. There's no numbers to back up why you're increasing. And I'd like to see more of that. I'd like to see more numbers than just average. The current fiscal year budget was not available online to anyone to look at it. And when the budget comes out, it needs to go out online so that we can look at it as It's out there for last year's budget. But for us to come to try to speak on it, we need to have the information in our hand to be able to look at it. And it's not out there. As far as teachers' pay, I agree. Teachers need to be paid more. But we also need to look at where we're at. I looked at the sheets, and the one sheet Mr. Steele put out there, when I look at the thing, it says Portsmouth is 1, 2, 3, 3, 3, 4 across the board. I find that in line with the rest of the school districts. And we also need some type of, if we're going to pay these teachers, we need results. Our SLLs have, I've been here, my second school term here, we've consistently gone down. And that's not consistent with giving teachers raises. And, you know, I appreciate your time and effort and the hard work that all you members do. But I'd like to see more effort put into our education versus some of our other things that seems to be on other people's agendas. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Muttlow. Any other speakers before we close this hearing? Go ahead and try it from there, Mr. Trosky. Let's see if it works. Travel's, well, the camera would have a hard time getting to you. Can you come down this way?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, honorable members of the board, fellow citizens. I want to echo the previous speaker's comments about making information available to the public, not at the moment we walk in the door for the public hearing, but in advance. I review annually the city's budget. It's presented at least two weeks before the public hearings start. The numbers are available online, and I'm the kind of person who needs time to look through, to reflect, to research, and then make proposals based on the combination of the information presented and the research and reflection. This is a lot to absorb at one sitting, and I know that I have not assimilated much of the information that was presented tonight. Portsmouth City Schools does have a channel, TV channel, and streams content online. Mr. Steele's presentation could have been posted in advance for the citizenry to examine and reflect on. Now, I've not made this, this is not my first time making this comment. I've made this previously, and it's still business as usual. I'm a supporter of schools. I came out of the public education system, more than one. I moved in my junior year of high school, or between my sophomore year and junior year of high school. So I actually went to public schools in two different jurisdictions, many, many hundreds of miles apart. And I'm a believer in public education. My grandfather, who raised me, was a career teacher in the New York City schools. My higher education, both universities that I attended were state-supported institutions. I believe in the power of public education to lift people to higher levels of economic achievement. And I'm dedicated to the proposition that all students can learn. Many students in our system require more support to learn because of the socioeconomic circumstances that they are raised in. But I believe we owe it to them. And I believe the future of our country depends on helping these students to succeed.
Mr. Trosky, may I ask you to wrap it up unless you want to ask the board for more time?
No, sir, I don't want to ask for more time. I want to ask for more information in advance, and I want to ask for the opportunity to be able to present these numbers intelligently to city council so that you can have more resources for doing your job. Thank you very much.
Granted, can we come back and if we have questions, as board members?
You talking about tonight or Thursday?
No, tonight. If I correct.
Well, before I declare.
Before you declare a close?
Yeah. Ask your question, and then we'll public it. Otherwise, we'll close the hearing, and that's going to be it for tonight. We'll move on.
Okay. With listening and so forth, I do have a couple of questions. It seems to...
Mr. Steele?
Well, if anyone can answer this. First off, Mr. Muttlow had brought up that there was no stipend for some mentors. I think I heard that was a total of three mentors?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then now we've had two people discuss the fact that, I know this is a preliminary budget and so forth, but what is the rationale for this not being published beforehand?
Well, I think it's a, this is me talking.
I mean, whoever can answer this question?
I think, I think Mr. Trosky has a valid comment. And, yes. And in this presentation, we wanted to have the highlights. The budget book, in fact, will be available to the school board, we're planning on tomorrow or Monday, which is the full budget book. And that's the really thick budget book that is currently posted, that you see from last year. And in the last couple of years, we've really increased the content of that book, and we've moved up the dates. Normally, I think previously that was published like in August. That wasn't available to the public in August. Last year, we pushed up the date to be a lot sooner, and we're looking to continue to increase that date to make it more transparent. Earlier public session presentations were maybe only five or six slides. And so even at the highlight level, we're trying to increase that. But our goal is to even further increase the amount of information we provide the public. So we're looking at more information but also getting it quicker. So we have a goal to continue to improve in that regard. So I don't dispute the issue of trying to get more information to the public.
Is there a possibility that, as that is made known to us, that that could also be made known to the public at the same time? Or is that something...
Well, I think that's, I'll need to talk to the clerk of the board. I can tell you that the school board has agreed to adopt the Virginia School Board Association Board Doc system, which is similar to some other school districts. So information that is posted and presented to school board members will be automatically posted and available at the same time to the public. So that's another area we're trying to improve transparency and get that information to the public soon.
On your slide presentation, slide or page number 11 in our sheets, general funding expenditures 2014, 15. Under transportation, 6.3 million, a 4% total of the total budget. How much of this 6.3 is necessarily going towards, I guess, when you break it down as far as fuel costs, expenditures with regards to runs, and like different runs, the runs that are done throughout cities that you do every single year? What kind of a cost is that added into this as well, besides fuel costs? Is there any other...
I mean, all those costs are there. The salaries are there. And the people costs are probably the biggest ones.
Okay. Okay. So that's for that 6.3. That's encompassing everything as far as salaries...
Everything around transportation.
And again, I noticed that, if I understand correctly, the 140 million is based upon level funding and with what the governor has been proposing. And so as you went through the slides, we came back to the fact that on slide 22, items included in the budget, those items are included in the budget at level funding, correct?
Well, again, all of these items plus all the other items make up our needs requirement. So we're not talking revenue anymore. We're talking what we would like to expend on the expenditure.
Correct. So if we get 146, then we would get pages 22 through 27.
Correct.
And if we get 140, then we get page 22, which is right there up there.
Yeah. And it will cover the must funds.
Okay.
And then we're going to have to go through and start prioritizing the rest of them to see how far down the list we can go. We also may want to modify certain items that could affect the dollar figure there, like the timing of implementation and things like that. So there are some other variables after we get the final figure that we can both prioritize and adjust in our effort to make the balance budget.
And as far as some of those positions, on page 27, the PIO, the grants writer position, and also on page 26, the district athletic and athletic track. Has any of those been posted?
Yes.
Ah, yes. They have been posted?
Yes.
How does that work?
Public Information Officer has been posted currently.
How does that work? Because, I mean, I guess what I'm kind of thinking is, it's kind of like putting the cart before the horse a little bit. I mean, these are items that's in this budget to vote on. So how could, if we're posting it as a position, but yet we haven't voted on it, and it's not even, it's not even included in the must funds? I mean, these are things that we've come back to. How can we post something that's not even in existence yet?
Mr. Blam, we did, we brought those three positions before the board.
Right.
And said that we were going to advertise for those. So it was known to the board that the PIO, the human resource position, and assistant superintendent curriculum instruction, we brought it before you to go ahead, to get permission to go ahead and advertise for those.
The positions were already...
Yeah, they are.
Yeah.
I get that. I'm just kind of, I guess I'm just looking at it. I mean, if you're taking stuff and it's...
Two of them are already there, and you asked him to start working on PIO. And that's what he did. He started, he hasn't hired anyone yet, because if this group's got, if we don't get what we need, then something's going to have to be sacrificed in order for you all to bring in the PIO.
Right. And with the PIO, we're advertising now, but we wanted to get the advertisement out there so once the budget is done, we can move forward. I didn't want to have a budget approved, then have to wait another month with advertising, then interview to find someone to interview. So that's where we are with that.
Okay. So if, from understanding correctly, then what has been done is, the positions have been advertised, but there's no movement on it yet until after a budget is approved? There's no interviews or anything of that caliber?
Probably the PIO.
The PIO.
The PIO, okay.
Yeah, those are two already in the budget.
Right, vacant.
Okay.
Mr. Nance? I'm sorry. Were you finished, Mr. Nance?
Yeah, I believe so, for now.
Okay, Mr. Nance.
Wouldn't the PIO already end up in classification plan anyway?
It's eliminated.
I'll be honest with you, Mr. Nance.
They've moved it over.
It's been back and forth. I don't know what, I think it's out now. I think it was in, it was out, and it kept going back and forth. And I would have to ask, I would have to ask...
Yeah. It does appear in the pay and classification plan, but it's not currently an active position in position control.
Correct.
So we're talking about two different things. Yes, sir. You're correct.
Also, you know, we must be mindful of the fact that we have a deputy superintendent retired January 1, and some of those funds could be taken. We need a PIO desperately. I mean, just like fire departments need EMTs, we need a PIO. I mean, just like fire departments need EMTs, we need a PIO. Because if we don't tell our stories, someone's gonna tell it for us, and they're gonna get it wrong. Thank you.
The Medicaid maximization, when will we know what that estimated figure is?
Um, Alex, could you help us? Good evening, everybody. We are working on that right now. It really is a process. We're working with a consulting company right now. We don't have a figure on that because it's really looking at the services. We think there's places we can increase services, and it's really gonna take the time. So, I would say within the next year, we're gonna have a better idea of where we can increase those services, but it's gonna take time looking at the plan. It's a complicated process.
Okay. So, do we know what the, um, current reimbursements?
I don't have that information right off. I'd have to go to the finance folks.
I don't, I don't have that figure. But we're, we're already getting reimbursed in sense.
Correct.
It's usually, I think it's at a higher rate than, than some other districts that have gotten offered a lot, a lot less Medicaid reimbursement. But we're trying to get even more, uh, of potential services that we can offer to get Medicaid reimbursement, that we're already providing for, but it may, in some cases, just require more documentation or something like that.
Correct. We, we right now bill for speech, we bill for nursing services, for OTPT services. We're now looking at narrowing that down into transportation services, to private care nurses. We're looking at our grant to move employees out of the grant and, and work on putting them back into local and seeing what we can do that way. But it would take us another year to see, I think, in 15, 16, to see the increase in that.
All right. Thank you.
As far, as far as the Medicaid, um, program we're working on, we do have a full-time person at Clark Dashiell. Does that correct? Is responsible for that?
Um, thank you. No, we actually do not have a, a full-time person. One of the special ed supervisors oversees that, um, and that's a great question. That's something we would like to look at a little bit further because the amount of work behind that does really require some constant overseeing. So, uh, the last year, we really looked at that, tightened that up, but that's something we'd like to see once we get the consultation services and see where we can go with that.
Reams?
Yes, um, thank you Chairman Bridge for it. I, I was looking at slide, I think number 16, the regional district budget proposals, and it was just a comment, uh, the different strategies to balance the budget. You presented us a slide from the various divisions. However, you know, you didn't present us a strategy. It was, the others do at least present a strategy. And then it was just, uh, budget represents needs of the division, but that's really not a strategy. So, I, that was my observation. So, I would think if we did not get the amount that we were asking for, what would be the strategies? And if you're going to use the other districts as an example and list their strategies, then certainly to present it to the board, you need to present us what strategies is what. That was an observation. And my other question was related to the comments from some of the speakers. So, can I say it now? I, I would like to know from, um, maybe the board or Dr. Bracy, because at, at our last meeting, it was a request that the speakers be allowed to speak for five minutes instead of the three, just like the city. And is that just a vote from the board, or do we change, have to go back and change the policy?
I mean, that's something to look at, see if it's written. If it's not written, then it's just a matter of changing it.
But just, okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's good. And also, um, I'm happy to hear that we are going to use the board docs.
Amen.
Because then you can pull up anything, eh, anywhere. It come, brings us to the 21st century.
In any time.
So, I, I, I also would like a target date of when the public or the community can expect that we will go live with our board documents. Because we, we've asked also that when we come to these meetings, that we be not given the package the night of the meeting. I think, uh, Reverend Patillo asked that the last time. But tonight, we were still given the benchmarks.
That was on last, I, I think somebody...
That's, you already, you already have the benchmark information.
Oh, this is just the copy?
Yeah, this is...
Again?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's just some reformatting of it. That's nothing new.
Okay, reformat?
Yeah.
It's different, but the same information?
Same information.
Okay.
Same information.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, but we would like to get a target date. If you can, uh, let us know, uh, Mr. Scheffler or whomever does that, when they will go live with the board docs, so the community can be informed and they can pull up the same thing that we pull up. So, if we can find that out maybe at the 26th meeting, it shouldn't take us that long.
I think we can give you a preliminary there right now.
Certainly. Um, I, I actually spoke with, uh, had a preliminary conversation with our trainer today. And what I'll say is, we can actually get started as soon as we can muster the board to go through 45 minutes of training. So, I'm gonna be talking with Kathy. We're gonna go ahead and schedule that training. There's a three-hour training session that's gonna be involved with the folks that are gonna do publishing. And then there's a 45-minute training session for the school board and other entities that will access it from the, from the course of public school side. So, we'll, we'll get that going and we'll start, uh, getting, getting you in. It's gonna happen in one day, so the challenge is gonna get everybody here for that 145 minutes.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you.
Science?
Um, and I think, thank you Chairman Bridge for it. I think the other thing too is maybe our turnaround time on our public access channel, on channel 46, 48?
Somewhere.
Uh, 47, somewhere there. But I think if we could possibly get our meetings published at, on a quicker turn, so that we would've had the public work set, uh, the city had the public work session up there, but we could've had our presentations up there a little bit longer for other people to have access to. Maybe that's something else we can look at as well.
Ms. Lamb? Now that that's been brought up and so forth with regards to the access of public and so forth, how difficult would it be to actually, instead of just recording the meeting, but how difficult would it be for the, the meeting to actually be live? I understand Chesapeake, uh, there, when you're seeing it on TV, you're seeing it live. It's going on as, as the meeting's going, it's going on. How difficult would something like that be for us?
Dean, Dean could address that too. But I, I, there is the technology as well.
No, no. You asked the wrong person to get it. Girls, I tell you, it'll be Friday. You just ain't sure.
Um, the biggest challenge is the majority of our meetings are held on a, on a different network than what we write on. So, it would be getting the connectivity between the city's network and our network. Having a meeting in this particular venue certainly makes the endeavor a little bit easier, um, but there would be some expenditures, uh, that we would have to incur in order to be able to stream live, uh, the, uh, the, the board meetings. So, it's something we could certainly look to or look at if, if it's the board's wish, superintendent's wish. Um, but again, the, the logistical challenge is where we hold our, the majority of our meetings.
Do it for three rooms. This one, the council chambers.
Okay.
And the small room, the conference room. That would be the three that we would do it from if we had to do it.
Absolutely. We're actually getting some, uh, looking to upgrade this particular facility to be able to do a little bit better with not having to have a doorway camera and put some cameras in here. So, that'll certainly help that process with regards to this room, with that upgrade. And then I'll check out what it's gonna take to get the facilities.
Just a follow-up. I have asked the, um, staff to have the, any package, anything that needs to go out to board members to, that will go out and everything else does. So, we, we're looking at the Friday before the Thursday meeting. So, there shouldn't be any more, um, packages just at your stations when you come in. Everything will be out.
Thank you.
So, that will eliminate that. So, we've already discussed that.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no, oh, if there are no other speakers or no other questions, glad this public hearing closed. And now, uh, we will go to, I don't know, to leave for discussion. Now, what I did, instead of listing each one of these items from the last meeting, I figured we could cover it under board members' comments and concerns. And those three items were, uh, benchmarks, uh, day treatment program, and the gates, uh, received from the city's hospitals, so by the bracer. I don't know who you have, you have it for that, but those would, would be covered on the, that particular item, then we will go to closed session. Okay.
Okay. Starting with the benchmarks, we have, uh, Mr. Nann and Dr. Taylor will present those.
Chairman Bridge, um, vice chair is not here. School board members and guests assembled, greetings. It is my pleasure to bring to you tonight, um, information 2014-15, second nine-week benchmarks, uh, population for this year. Before I get started, I would like to take an opportunity just to explain a little bit about the course of public school systems assessment program.
Can I get you to, I guess, come this way and stand up? The voice is not carrying.
I can do that.
And I see them pointing, so he may be having a little bit of trouble catching you all, so. Oh, Mr. Pan?
Mr. Pan, I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Nann, come on up, because we gotta take a break.
Just turn over a little bit.
Excuse my voice, my sound, just, uh, I should, you know? But I would like to take this opportunity just to give an explanation as to how we do our assessment practice in Course of Public School Division. Uh, the purpose of the benchmark assessments, mainly we use them to build capacity for making better decisions as they relate to instruction. It's mainly diagnostic in nature. Uh, it helps us determine if we need to make any changes instructionally. It also helps us to determine if we are doing the right instructional practices. Why do we assess the students? Well, one reason we assess is to make better instructional decisions as they relate to curriculum matters. We also want to determine, uh, how instruction is working, to determine if the students are achieving our intended aim, which is, uh, obtaining knowledge and skills to do well on the SOL assessments, and also to become good citizens. Our benchmark assessment practice, what we do, we kinda go on a cycle. That cycle really starts at the end of the year, which would've been last school year. We analyze the data as it relates to the status of learning assessments. Uh, that information is unpacked. Uh, we make projections of which schools will be accredited, and we also identify schools that we think will not be accredited, and those particular schools we would target and set up plans to give them additional support. We also want to know what went wrong, what went right, any adjustments needed. We want to make those, and we also celebrate our successes, and we prepare for the upcoming year. We also have test writers that convene in the summertime to write test items. Uh, those individuals come together in the four different core areas, and they make any necessary changes to the curriculum, as well as make sure everything is aligned. And they make any realignment adjustments. The final version of those benchmark tests, uh, published into the interactive achievement system, which is the vehicle we use to deploy the online assessments division-wide. There's an annual benchmark, uh, assessment schedule that is established, and that's sent out to let you know when the benchmarks would take place. We give assessments at four and a half weeks, nine weeks, 13 and a half weeks, and we also give midterms and finals at the high school level. All of our, or most of our nine-week assessments mimic the status of learning assessment and content and format. They're administered through grades one through eight, and the finals and midterms at the high school level. At the end of each nine weeks, um, at the division level, we sit down, we unpack the data. We do identify trends, we identify schools needing additional support, we also identify weaknesses and strengths. We develop a division action plan. We also train data analysts to go out into the schools to be a link or liaison between the division, uh, and the schools. And at the division level, we share the data with school improvement teams, that data's presented, and a comprehensive data book is published. At the school level, schools identify students needing additional support, they identify school trends and patterns, identify school weaknesses and strengths. They also develop school individual plans. Data analysts train school staff out in the schools at the building level to use data meaningful and to guide instruction. They establish intervention plans of action, which are student-centered, and school data is also shared with school staff. So, the cycle starts over again each year. We constantly are adjusting instructional practices, and we are always guided by the data. We're constantly seeking new and innovative ways to look at data, use data, and make use or make data more meaningful. We're constantly realigning the curriculum to make sure that it's tightly aligned. We're not there yet, but the cycle of building capacity for more meaningful and strategic decisions is always evolving and improving. Now, moving into the data, and I'm looking at each school. What I've done is I've reorganized the data to give you everything at the school level by core area, uh, so that you can see everything together versus flipping the pages. Uh, so, here we have each school, uh, year one and year two, which would've been last year, second nine-week benchmark, is what we are comparing this to. Uh, that would be the way of comparing apples to apples, uh, 'cause we don't want to compare apples to oranges. For example, looking at Brighton Elementary School, in 2013-14, which was the second nine weeks of that period, uh, just looking at reading three, for example, the average score was 55.7%. This year, second benchmark, average score was 62.4. That's a 6.7% gain. There are gains and there are losses, you know, different schools. Uh, in this particular case at Brighton, uh, they had significant losses at the fourth grade level of 18.8%, a percent drop. They had improvements at the fifth grade and sixth grade level. Those are significant, double digits. They also had double-digit drop at third grade back. So, as we go through the schools, we're gonna see pockets of different, you know, weaknesses and strengths. But at the divisional level, we look at the summary of data, and we look at the patterns so that as supervisors go out into the schools, they can look to see how everyone deviates from the division, because everybody's not gonna be the same. Looking at Churchill Academy, this particular school, uh, this year failed to meet accreditation by only one point in English. Uh, they've shown significant progress in mathematics and reading at the fifth grade level and the fourth grade level for math, and reading at the fifth grade level. Fourth grade reading for this particular school continues or seems to be a challenge, um, with the 8.8% drop. Next school, Churchill Elementary. This school has been fully accredited for several years. They too have some, uh, decreases in progress and some increases. Uh, for example, their progress has declined in the areas of reading at the fourth grade level and the sixth grade level, and decline... level and the sixth grade level, and declined somewhat at the third grade mathematics level and fifth grade level, and then fourth grade history. Improvements have been noted in reading at the fifth grade level by thirteen percentage points, and slightly, slight increases in reading three, math four, math six. Churchland Primary, another school which has been fully accredited for a number of years, their performance has improved, or improvements were noted in two areas. Mathematics four, thirteen point three percentage point increase, math five, twelve point nine percentage point increase. Progress declined slightly in the areas of third grade reading, sixth grade reading, third grade math, fourth grade history, and fifth grade science. Now, did you want me to go through each and every question?
No, thank you. I think, mainly just so I could get the questions, but this is helped by you giving them a little bit more information, I'm sure. So let me open it up to questions, and that may be, that might solve, you know, something. Okay. Dr. Taylor, did you have something to add before I start with the board?
Yes, I would like to add our plan of action, if it's okay with the board, things that we were going, we are planning and have in place to do as a result of the data that we're currently looking at, and it's brief.
Did you wish to hear that, or did you want to go to questions first? Okay.
Is that okay? Thank you. As we continue to look at the data, especially with the schools at a glance, as Mr. Nottingham has very nicely explained, one of the things that we noted as we talked with the schools was to find out how many folks do you actually have in those buildings that are now involved in tutoring? We found that we have one hundred and thirty tutors out there in the elementary schools. We also have seventy tutors at the high schools. At the junior high, middle schools, where we lost the program specialist, we now have one tutor at each one of the middle schools, but they hope to bring the last one on for Churchland Middle. This happened after the second nine weeks data for the middle schools, but the one hundred and thirty tutors for the elementary schools have been in place, and they have been moving along with them as of December and January. The other thing that we did was to look at a forty-five-day implementation plan. That actually came basically from the state, and with that particular plan, it began to explain more things that we could do that we're currently doing, but with much more intensity. We are looking more closely at the blueprints for that percentage of students who did not pass the test. And as we look at those specific students, we're looking at the bar, which is seventy-five percent for reading and seventy percent for math, social studies, and science, as we continue to compare the gains and the losses. We look at the SOL released test items that we had just received in English. They have been sent to the schools, but more importantly, they are being used in the instructional program to make sure that the items are being taught that will challenge the students as the SOL tests will do at the end of the year. Keep in mind now that our benchmark tests are developed by our program specialists and directors. As those tests are developed, again, they are aligned, because what we do is aligned with the state. That's where the curriculum comes from. We don't make this up on our own. So when the state sent these items out in February, as a matter of fact, at the end of February, we immediately got them to the schools for the schools to use. We have actually asked every elementary school to send in a forty-five-day plan of action from the school. Even though we have our forty-five-day plan of action from CNI, the schools are also going to send us their forty-five plan of action. This will ensure more accountability for the schools and for CNI to actually work together and to make sure we are on the same page. We have also done the blitzes. They began, and they began in the schools as we look through the data, who needed it most. I have all six of those schools listed where they have been completed, where all members of the, of the core content teams have gone into those schools who need it most. And what do we do very quickly? We go into the classrooms with more than one person observing that particular class. Then we go in to see what are the look-fours that I see and what do you see? We make the comparisons, and we begin to talk about that with the teachers as well as the administrators. Moving along, I would like to share with you, as of now, we have actually done one, two, three, four, five, six, without calling the schools' names, those blitzes have been performed, completed, but that's, they're not completed in the sense of completion. We will go right back, because those are the schools that are in greatest need. We also have asked each one of the directors to make sure the schedules are turned in to my office every Friday, wherein we will have a glance at who's going where, what days, and by name, so that if a school does not have a program specialist on the day that he or she is expecting it, it will already have been determined before that day comes in, unless there is sickness in one's family. We also looked in terms of how many of our people are actually working with small groups as compared to who's still working with teachers, which no one really should be working with professional development right now. We're down to the core, wherein we must work with the small groups of students that have been identified by our data, as the principals have shared, and we have our own, and it does match. The other thing, we have adjusted the pacing guides due to the intercoalment weather that we had that consisted of eight days. Once we did that, all of the schools received whatever needed to be changed. For example, last week when the writing test was going on, actually the benchmark test was scheduled in the high schools. The principals changed those schedules, gave the classes more time for instruction in the math, the social studies, science, because writing was being taking place in the building. So the math, social studies, and science folk were delayed, because they had more time to teach the curriculum. That was a quick fix. Two more, two or three things I want to mention. We are going again on Monday to a training that will give the directors, three principals, the continuous look-fours as to what are you looking for in the lesson plans, as well as the implementation of the curriculum in the classrooms. We have also found that not only are we looking, but the schools are giving projections. This is where we are now. Where do you think you will be in June? Based on the data, not only are they just saying, because I have, let's say, a seventy percent in reading, which is not enough, it has to be seventy-five percent, we have asked, what about the students that you are going to try to move on so that we will get that seventy-five percent? It has become very surgical versus looking at a piece of paper and saying, we have to move five points. How do you get to the five points? What students are you working with? What strategies are you using? And if indeed that isn't working, then to make sure that we know, and how do we know? We are meeting with the schools, with the schools, with the schools. It's a day-to-day process. So with that said, I will share with you that with the tutors out there, the blitzes, the implementation of the forty-five-day plan, the schedules being turned in to my office every Friday, looking to see where we're going to, who's going where for the next week, also making sure that illness, that's usually what happens, illness has not fallen upon someone on our staff, wherein that person, if he or she misses that school, that cannot continue. We have some people who may be out for, say, three or four weeks, and if those persons are out, we go back and we revamp that schedule so that that school can be covered. So with all of the human energy that all of us have, and the constant, constant awareness in front of everybody, not weekly but daily, we are going to do our very, very best to make sure that the projections are going to get us to where we need to get. Now, I know you want to know, will we look like we did last year? I would very much say, no, we will not look like we did last year, looking at the positives. We looked at this data, I looked at it, all of us looked at it again. And as we look at it, we have a few schools, when I say a few, we have about four to five schools at the elementary level that we are being very intensive with. At the middle school level, we're being intensive with all three, all three middle schools. At the high schools, IC Northam looks good with the mathematics. We were just there today in governance. They look good. So if IC Northam continues on the role that they are on, I don't think we will be involved with conditional accreditation at IC Northam. They are making, believe it or not, they are making a lot of strides. They look good in science, history. English saw a drop a tiny bit, but when we went through the projection, we looked at the percentage of students today, we see where, where, where we will be our target in English at IC Northam. I would say that's one of the most positive things that I can announce, simply because we do not want our schools to fall in conditional accreditation. We want everybody to be accredited, but realistically, when we look at the data, when we look at the gains, we have to be reasonable and fair to ourselves. We want to remain transparent. We are definitely not going to be where we were last year. Based on the strategies that are in place, the awareness that I see with CNI and our schools put together, and our superintendent, Dr. Bracy, has certainly addressed it in our meetings as to what we have to make sure we are doing. So I'd like to thank you for giving us another opportunity to come back and share this information with you, and I would especially like to thank Dr. Bracy for sharing a monitoring device that has been very successful, in his experience, experiences that we have put into place as effective as the end of today. If you don't believe it, ask these directors that are here. We have our schedules, we are in place, we are ready to hit the road running, not Monday, but even tomorrow, which is Friday. So we are on top of it, and whenever I need, and you want information, please ask me, we will provide it. That concludes my comments on our plan of action. Did I miss anything, or directors, if I might ask? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Okay, now, Mr. Lamb?
Let me first. I saw, I saw. What did the state recommend?
The state recommended tight, close alignment to the blueprints, and making sure we go back and revise and modify the pacing guides due to the employment weather, and to definitely get in there and provide that intensive, the intensive work in small groups for the students that we find below that seventy-five percent. And in addition to that, they also ask that we keep in mind that as we work with those SOL released items that come from the state, that the concept is not out there which says, this is what you will have on the test. It's the concept of making sure the teachers understand, this is how we must teach in order to prepare our students for that more rigorous type of item that will be on the test. So we are practicing those in our classes on a daily basis.
What is blitz?
The blitz is when all of us, when I say all of us, all of the directors appear at a school unannounced, and we go in and do classroom observations, following the observations, work with the teachers and the administration as to what we saw and what is it we need to do correct, anything that's not in line.
And I did hear you say that the program specialists and directors are the test writers? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And also, yes, that is correct, but I was thinking about another.
So is tutoring effective? Is tutoring during school time or for elementary school? How does tutoring work?
Sometimes it is, it depends on the school, it's before, during, and after, as well as on Saturdays. For example, at West Haven Elementary, they have something called the Blue Jays program that they use every year, and that's done on Saturdays. They pull in tutors from across the city, and that's, I think, about a half day. Many of the high schools do Saturday programs as well. Most of them are during, after, are after school during the week for the SOL tutoring.
Have you all assessed the tutoring to be able to let us know if it's effective on every level, knowing that some students may have transportation issues and all of that? Have you assessed all of that?
We haven't assessed how effective it is, but as far as transportation is concerned, we provide transportation for the students. That's part of some of the money that I think we saw projected here in the budget, but for the transportation for elementary schools, that comes out of kind of one, but for the middle and high schools, they're coming out of local.
And for curriculum and instruction, did you recommend any changes from your department as relates to instruction? Did you all recommend specific changes, and are they being implemented right now?
What I just went over with you, these came from CNI, and we carry them out to the schools.
Okay, because you said you, you were asking them to give you their recommendations as well, right?
Oh, that's a good question. When I said the forty-five-day plan, we, we don't just say, you have, you have forty-five days for testing, say. We want to know, what is your plan of action in the, in your school to help us make this happen? We know what our plan is, but what is your plan? So we're looking at the two, putting them together to make sure we are on the same page. That's with the school and CNI. We don't work in isolation. We've got to work together, and that's done when we go to the schools, and also when we have our school improvement team meetings, as we're calling the principals to come in, and we work with them in small groups, then based on the look-fours as to what we are seeing at the schools, and that's what we are being trained on right now, and we're passing it on to the principals that we're in. Three principals are in training right now.
Okay, Mr. Lamb.
Just a couple of questions. Looking at the data and so forth, I mean, it would be one thing if we were looking at isolated, you know, issues, but I mean, this is looking like this is across the board, especially in areas of reading and, and math completely. As far as the, the directors in summer, putting together questions for the benchmark tests and so forth, I guess, what, what has changed from, because some of these numbers are big drops from one year over the last, you know, previous year? And we can say so much about weather, you know, playing a role in this, but what, I guess, what was different about those benchmark questions this year that could have been from last year?
The questions this year, number one, are coming from the interactive achievement assessment program. That's new. They are more rigorous. I will say to you, for grade four, where you see the big drop across the board at elementary, it was the test. It was not the students. The others, I would say, are valid, more valid, but the one for fourth, you see the big drop. So the newest thing is that we have items, we have a test thing, we have locked items that teachers did not have access to, where they, where the test writers were able to go in and write their test based on the test items coming from interactive achievement assessment program.
Okay. And it was brought up that the data analyst is out in the schools?
Yes.
How often?
They, they work in the schools, but they're trained out of my office. We see them monthly, and we give, go through data, how to interpret data, how to use data more effectively.
So they are in the schools every- So they are in the schools every day?
Every day.
Okay, and when we talk about the tutoring, this has always impressed me, or I've always been surprised by, when you're mentioning tutoring and so forth, is this actually tutoring for SOLs? Or is this tutoring for basic skills? Because anyone that has spent time in the classroom somewhere knows that you could take a fourth grader and tutor and get them up to speed on how to take an SOL test and so forth, but if they're sitting at a first grade math level, I don't want to say it's impossible, but it's next, it's very, very difficult. So on these tutoring aspects, is the tutoring program geared more to getting them up to speed to take the SOL test? Or is it to concentrate actually on the basic skills that they're missing?
Basic skills that they are missing, that's preventing them from being successful on the SOL test. The teachers, the regular classroom teacher is ultimately responsible for teaching the student. The tutors that come in don't work with the students who are there and advanced. They work with the students in the classrooms who are working the low level. So a reading teacher within the classroom, when he or she is teaching that lesson, that teacher already knows that this student needs prior learning on a certain skill. So the tutor knows what skill that is. And what the tutor will do is work with that teacher on the skill where the student is weak in, to get that student ready, say, ready to learn and move forward when he or she goes into the classroom.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, so basically what you're looking at is a fourth grader and they're weak in an area that we know coming up on the fourth grade math SOL test. So the tutor is going to concentrate on that area?
That is correct.
As opposed to the basic skill possibly of maybe that student doesn't understand multiplication, which is back here in second grade?
And that's where the tutor goes. The teacher, okay, let me make sure I'm understanding you. The tutor is there to provide reinforcement and support and some, that's what it is, reinforcement and support. Once you tell me that this student is weak in drawing inferences, then I'm going to use passages or examples for that student to practice in, to try to understand, how do I draw an inference? What is drawing inferences? What is using context clues? So that's what the tutor does, works on those types of activities with the students.
And then, I understand, and most of these numbers and so forth is really looking at math and reading at that K through third grade level. My question is, I understand we all, doesn't matter where you are in the Commonwealth of Virginia, you have a curriculum framework across the board?
That's correct.
And that is what we use from Richmond. But what is our K through third curriculum? What do we use?
It comes from the state SOLs and it has the essential skills and knowledge that the students are to be taught, that's across the state of Virginia.
But what materials, what's our curriculum materials that we're using in that K through three setup?
All K through twelve, I'll speak for English, I can speak for all of them. Really, we have textbooks that we're using to support the curriculum.
And what's for that K through third reading, what textbooks would that be?
The basic reading. In addition to many other materials and including technology that's in the classrooms as additional resources for them to work with.
I just had a question, a couple of questions. I believe it's, you may have said that the tutors started in December and January?
Some schools, the principals make the decision as to when they bring the tutors in.
And when was the benchmark testing? The second?
The second nine weeks, what was the date of the benchmark testing? The end of January.
End of January. So they came in like December?
Many of them did. They don't bring them in when the school first starts. Some of them might, but many of them do not.
To see what weaknesses are?
Because we like to administer the first nine weeks benchmark test first so that we can give them information as to what they should be working on with the students.
Okay, because according to these numbers, it didn't look like they had much of an impact on the, there were a lot of chips or whatever. So, but you're saying these were done in January, the second benchmark?
Beginning of January.
In the January. So we are well on our way to seeing market improvements when it's SOL time? Is this what you're reporting?
We have third nine weeks, we're going to take a test again and in the third nine weeks. And I would want to think that with what we have in place, we're going to see improvements.
Yes. And you sound very optimistic today.
I feel optimistic. After having gone to the governance meeting this morning with Pratt Up, not Pratt Up, with Northam, and even last week, we went to governance with Pratt Up, I just feel more, I just feel more optimistic about it. And I hope that I can keep that feeling, but it won't be because we didn't work. You can bank on that either, because we're working and I just think it's going to be better. I believe it's going to be.
As I've said, I'm an outcome based person.
Yes.
I really want to know the results.
We'll be transparent, we're going to give it to you with fear, we're going to make sure.
And we need to know before where the issues are because we don't want to be blindsided, sitting here tonight thinking that we're just going to be just dandy and then when everything comes out, we're like.
Well, that for the record. I will not say that we will be one hundred percent at the school, but I will say that I'm, based on the projections, it appears that we are going to make, I'm going to say, a significant improvement versus something that's not.
And if it's anything that the board or that we need to do to provide support or whatever, please bring it to us, if we need extra people, extra tutors or whatever, because this is very critical.
It is.
It is very critical.
Thank you very much, and we will do it, and we will keep you well informed, yes. Thank you.
Dr. Woodaker, Reverend Patel.
I just want to know, there were some schools that had market improvements in terms of the percentages. So do we know what the correlates were as to why those schools improved? Because, for example, in the math six in several schools, I was looking at Lakeview in particular, we had a big increase. So is there like a model in terms of what you can attribute that increase to?
If it's okay, you mentioned math, I'd like to yield to Dr. Nichols for a second.
Okay.
Dr. Nichols?
Yes. In the example of Lakeview, this is the teacher's second year there. So last year she was doing, the teacher knew the sixth grade, which she still did quite well because as I've shared with you all before, scoring within about the sixties in math has correlated, I have correlated to the SOL scores with our benchmarks. So we can use that as a, you know, as a rough predictor. But again, so this is her second year through that same curriculum. And as you know, as you go through the second time, you do get more comfortable. And, you know, the person has, you know, been here all year. In many of the areas where we saw drops, that was where there were teachers who may have been out on medical leave or had surgery. So there were some of those other extenuating circumstances that come into play as well when you look at those numbers. But again, that's where we're trying to, you know, work with the substitutes that maybe they're, the teacher's out and, you know, keep that instruction moving along.
Okay, so it sounds like if we can place stability in terms of the teachers, that's a thing?
That is really, of course, you see that strength, that is really where the staff has been in place and you don't see a lot of turnover, that that is just huge because every time you get a new teacher in, you begin acclimating them to the resources we have available, to the software. So it's almost like starting, starting all over again.
Okay, thank you.
Reverend Patel?
I have two easy questions. And what am I probably asking myself? As far as our tutors, do we have a district-wide policy? Or tutors as far as the instructional tutor they use, the process that they use, structure and how they work with the children district-wide or is it based upon the individual tutor?
The one thing that is district-wide is that they are approved through HR for safety, to make sure we can help them. But the other, as far as the tutors, most of them, almost all of them are retired teachers. They come back, they're certified to teach, and then the principals, they have the autonomy, they choose their own tutors. And choosing them, then they work with them. And they have what they call coordinators who really organize the program within the schools and they go over the do's and the don'ts. And then they are assigned to the tutors based on the SOL coordinators to get most administrative staff being involved.
I was asked, I know you said that depending on the principal is when the tutor is actually brought into the school, like during the time of year?
That is correct.
Would it be beneficial, you think, if we had a district-wide date? Because I don't think reinforcement would be harmful at all at the beginning of the year or earlier in the year.
That's a good observation, Reverend Patel. What happened with that is, the elementary schools historically started later because of the darkness and the children going home on the buses in the dark and so the safety of the students. That is why some of them changed to Saturdays when they could come during the day. Other than that, principals have been given the autonomy to choose the days. They normally have the tutors to come in for twice a week. That's pretty systematic and consistent. And they start when they feel they need the tutors to come in. They want to make sure their staff is given the opportunity to work with the students first. That's why we don't start before the first nine weeks, just to make sure we know what we're working with and the skills that are needed in the schools. Now, you may find some variations out there because that can be. But if they are, the rationale is based on the principal as to when he or she wants to begin a tutor program. Some don't like to start it until the last nine weeks. It's sort of like that blitz, you know, we're going to give it this all-intensive approach. So we have been along with it, and is it better to do it another way? We can talk about that because that's a good point. Thank you.
And thank you. And I've also, I've been visiting quite a few schools. And just in your opinion, do you think you have adequate resources and funding for professional development when it comes to classroom management? Because we have a lot of new teachers and younger teachers. And do we have funds set aside already to go towards classroom management to help them? I've seen in a sense that that could be an issue in a lot of our classrooms.
I will start by saying, from the directors' offices, we have what we call instructional assistance. And then we have the classroom management program that's set up. Principals have the autonomy and they are asked, it's strongly recommended that they send the teachers who need help to focus assistance. We have directors who do training on that in August. We also have classroom management that is also done in the beginning with teachers. And sometimes we have them to come back two times, even three times, Reverend Patel. But they are contracted people. So that's what we do have in place for working with those teachers who aren't quite there. Now, for instructional materials and supplies, do we have enough? We have resources galore in those classrooms. When I say resources galore, I could not, I don't know, whatever they ask for, they normally get it. The Title I schools also get additional monies every year to buy more instructional supplies to participate in professional development. Now, we did slide back some on professional development as far as sending people out of the city because of many budget constraints. It's very expensive. And they began to cut down on how much we could use for room and how much you could spend for food. It was just expensive, so we tried to bring the staff development to them. Maybe one person or two people might go. It was sort of like using the train, the trainer model, wherein it would come back to the schools. But we still participate in professional development inside the city as well as outside, but we watch the outside spending.
Well, and I guess that's my question. Do you think there is more funding needed for outside training for professional development for as far as classroom management? Do you think what we offer within our district is enough for these teachers?
It's never enough. We could always use professional training in classroom management. We find that that's one of the key areas, especially for our new people, new teachers coming in and sometimes teachers who come here. So professional development is always worthwhile, but classroom management is big. You're right, you're right on it. Some have the knack for it, they get it and it works, and some have a harder time trying to make that work. And keep in mind, these folks are coming from all over the country to work in our schools. And when they get here, it may be totally different from the culture in which they may have come from. But I've always believed a good teacher is a good teacher. Children are children. And when you go into the classroom, going through the program certainly does train you, whether or not you are capable of implementing it, that's another situation. And that's why we have that focused assistance program in place. Also increased teacher evaluations done at the, for the first year, first to three years training, more so than we do the master teacher season here. And that comes out of HR, and we get that cycle for HR students. How many times we will evaluate a teacher during the year or over a three-year or two-year period of time? And it's based on tenure, the use that the person has and experience.
And my last question, I promise you. I mean, outside of fourth grade reading, one of my main concerns are our middle schools.
Yes.
And you stated that you're very, working very intensely with them now. But when did the intensity start as far as during this year with the middle schools?
It started in February, no, March, I'll tell you why. We had a middle school specialist who only had three schools. And she has resigned from Portland and has moved to California. As a result of that, needless to say, many times when that happens, the attendance is not what is expected. And that was a concern that people just didn't quite go to, not quite didn't go, wasn't there. The absentee rate was high and they did not have the instructional person coming in. It's sort of like, I'm here for three days, but I may be off for the fourth. It just wasn't consistent.
Thank you so much.
And I'm not justifying or saying that's the reason I don't do that. Because ultimately, I will always say, it is a teacher in the classroom who's there every day with those students. We serve as we are now, we'll support people, support. So when we go in, we support and do all that we can. So if a substitute is in that classroom, we go in that classroom and we work that day, but what happens the next day when I'm not there? So it's important that we can keep these classroom staff as much as possible. Not only that, when instructional people leave, we have not been replacing that person. So I didn't replace that position. That's why we brought on those two tutors for each middle school and they are there every day between about four hours per day and working with the most needed classes.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Hines?
One question, thank you, Chairman. The benchmarks in IA that you have now, you've talked about blueprints. Do these benchmarks have TEI's to the same percentage that our SOL do?
I would say yes, but the directors can answer better than I can. But that's one of the requirements is to make sure those CEI items are included. And that was one of the advantages of purchasing the Interactive Achievement Series was to make assessment, was to make sure they were there.
Because, I mean, if that's the case and we're seeing gains like third grade reading, you know, you're looking at fifth grade reading for the most, you know, for the most part is, with those TEI items still on that test, that is a very good indication that our kids can make the jump from a static fifty-question multiple choice to, you know, seven or eight questions that- to, you know, seven or eight questions that have the multiple moving pieces.
Okay. Thank you. That has been helpful. That was, that's a good observation. Thanks, La.
Okay. We'll move on to the second subject, the day treatment program. If there were some questions or comments from the board on that, who is the person for that? Come forward, Ms. Sugars, for questions or comments.
I'm assuming that Dr. Bray said told me she was the person to ask questions of, so that's why I asked her to come forward.
It feels as if there were some specific questions that the management.
Okay, who had the questions?
I had some questions and I think some other board members.
Okay.
Yep. We were really just trying to, I was trying to determine how are the programs selected to be in the schools? I don't think many of the board members knew they were in the schools. Is there a memorandum of understanding? Does it come before the superintendent? Or is it, I know they are on the Medicaid provider list. But since it is supposed to be a situation of choice for the student. And I know the parents, I'm sure they sign off that they can participate. But how are the people, how are they, how do they get into the schools?
The short answer is that the principals select them. But let me just share. What happens is when a provider is interested in providing service to Portsmouth schools, they generally contact me. I sit down with them. We talk about what services they are going to provide, how they're going to provide them, just what it is they are bringing to the table for our students. Once that has happened, I will say to them, I need to see their, they have to show me that they're licensed by the state to provide those services. And once that information is passed on to me, then I would say to them, if you can go out to the schools and talk with a principal. If the principal is interested in your particular agency serving his schools, his or her school, then I ask that that principal contact me. Then what happens is I ask for a listing of the persons who will be working for that agency in the school. They have to, a background check has to be provided. A TB test has to be provided. There is a memorandum of understanding slash agreement that the agency provides to Portsmouth schools. And in that, there is a statement, there are statements of the services that they will provide. And I think I have here, if you'll bear with me just one second as I rifle through all these pieces of paper, what we expect of them. I have something here somewhere titled "Expectations." Okay. The memorandum of agreement gives the program purpose, mission, goals, length of agreement, eligibility of participants, type and scope of services, anticipated ratio of participants to case manager, outcome assessment structure, and means of transmittal to Portsmouth Public Schools, a statement of compliance with school board policy, and any other information pertinent to program implementation, hours of implementation, and the contact person. Also, we look for a license from DMHRSA. And I think that, that agency title may have changed at this point. But it's the State Office of Behavioral Department of Mental Health and Developmental Services. Again, background checks of staff working with students. We ask for samples of any assessments, tools, reporting, reports reflecting progress, any pre-post participant evaluation, and any other documents pertinent. There is an outline of a formal process for feedback to Portsmouth Public Schools. There is an annual end-of-year report that we're asked, that they're asked to provide. There's also a package of information that they complete for research and evaluation because Mr. Nottingham made me aware of the fact that he feels that this is a research-based initiative because there are expected outcomes for the students. Now, in terms of the history of this, the Office of Youth Risk Prevention used to have what we call student resource liaisons or student assistance counselors. Those counselors were assigned to the schools. And they provided the affective kinds of group settings for students, looking at how they make decisions and things that would impact their behaviors. They were funded by the Safe and Drug Free Schools grant. When that money went away, then those positions went away. But the need did not go away. So at that time, our superintendent, Dr. Stuckwish, and I had a conversation about that need. And I think that there was someone that he was aware of who made him aware of the day treatment program process. The first group that came into my knowledge was YCAP. They came in, they sat with me. We talked about all the things here that we need and what our expectations are. And they went out and talked with the principals. And many of the principals selected them. After that, other agencies started to come. And again, the same thing happened. They went out and the principal selected them. Then that was up to the principal. I have nothing to do with that. I just say, go out and talk to them. If the principal likes what you're bringing to them, then the principal calls me. The other thing, and we carry through with the process, the other thing is because a provider is in a building does not mean that they are, that they remain in that building if the building administrator is not satisfied with the services that they're providing. Every year, I send something out to principals toward the end of the year. And I ask, are you satisfied with your current provider? If not, please let me know. For the most part, I think I've only had one situation where a provider, I mean, a principal was not satisfied with the provider. At that point, then whomever has been through my office and we've looked at all the things that they need to have in order to come into our schools, then they are free to go out and talk to the principal. If the principal wants to select them, that's fine.
Who signs the memorandum of understanding?
To this point, I have signed it with Dr. Stuckwish's permission. I signed the memorandum of understanding. I don't think, Dr. Shepherd, if I may, have you ever, okay, normally I'm the person who has signed the memorandum of understanding.
Well, I thought all contracts or MOUs had to come before the board for.
I can't, I won't even try to respond to that. I was given the permission to do that.
Because many of us didn't even know they were in the schools. And, you know, sometimes during the disciplinary hearings, they would say they went to day treatment. And most of us were thinking they went to day treatment someplace else, that it was not a part, you know.
It's a part of the, they're in the schools every day. And from what I can gather, as I said, I have not had any administrators for the most part, except in one instance. And the administrator who was not satisfied with that particular group did choose another group to provide services and they were satisfied with that. So I haven't gotten any indication that they're not satisfied with the services that are being provided. And the other thing is that generally in the high schools, because of the population, if the, if the principal wants more than one, two providers is generally what was the cutoff for the high schools. For the elementary schools, for the elementary and middle schools, it's been one provider. And how, the thing with that is the state allows a counselor to work with five to six students. If the need in that building goes beyond five to six students, then another counselor from that agency comes in. So that's how that population of counselors might grow within one building.
I just have, well, I do have a recommendation, a couple, that those providers, before that MOU is signed, that it should be presented to the board. And the superintendent should be the one that signs off on those. Because there is a liability there if something goes wrong. And the board is responsible. So we need to know who's in these, who we have in these buildings and doing what. And also, if they are treating the students, I'm sure they have to have the parents consent to do that. But do they give monthly reports to the principal, to the family member? Or does anyone know what is going on?
Now, what I ask of them is a year-end report in terms of whether or not they feel the, what kind of progress, the level of progress that students have made based on the services that they have provided the students individually. What I did was I asked that one of the, I asked one of the providers if they could come this evening so that if there were questions that I could not answer, that they might be able to answer. So if that is all right with you.
Well, I'm saying, I'm kind of familiar with how this works. But I'm saying that if we have them in the system trying to help the students, which I have no problem with that, I just want to make sure that we're following the proper guidelines, that the superintendent is aware that it comes before the board for a vote. Because if anything goes wrong, then we are the ones in the paper. And that makes sure, we want to make sure they have those background checks, those references, the credentials that they need to be dealing with the children. That's my concern. And if they are in there, I would think that they would do a monthly report or something before the end of the year. Because suppose there is an issue and you don't get a report to the principal of the teacher or something.
I'm sorry, the agencies, the agencies work with the children and the families. And so the families are made aware of the, now, if you're speaking of a formal written document, that I can't attest to. But I know they do work with the children and the families. And so the families are aware of what's going with the children. Not only that, but I think after a six-month period, there is a review to determine whether or not the child is still eligible to receive services. And if the behavior has not, has changed, then service is terminated. And they go back through the YCAP process. But if the behaviors seem to be ongoing, then they remain eligible for service provision.
Well, maybe just to tighten it up, because they are being paid, Medicaid billing. I know the system doesn't pay anything, but they are there, they are being billed, they get paid. And it's like the contracts where we have and where they still have to do the monthly report to see how the kids are doing. And if they're even attending. Because some of them say that they don't see the therapist, the counselor.
Now, in the build, now, if that's, if we're talking in-home, that may not.
No, in the building.
Okay. Well, as far as I know, that it's being provided in the building. But the background checks and the TB tests and the memorandum of understanding are down here. They're in Human Resources.
Ms. Hines, then, Mr. Layon?
Thank you, Chairman. With any intervention, there's got to be some progress monitoring. And a six-month or end-of-the-year evaluation, I don't think is necessarily enough. I mean, who's doing the evaluation? Because if I have a student that is in my classroom and is receiving services and behaviors are not changing, then we need to do it more than a six-month. I mean, with any intervention, there's got to be progress monitoring, no matter what the intervention is. So there needs to be checks along the way to see if the child's behavior is getting better. There needs to be interventions, I mean, progress monitoring to make sure that the child's behavior isn't getting worse. I mean, there's a lot of things that happen to a child in six months. You know, I mean, there's a lot of things that happen to a child in a week. And so I just think that that six-month timeframe is not good enough to make sure that our kids are getting services and that our kids are actually, you know, improving so that we can see better behavior. I would like to see the evaluation form that the principals do. I would like to know how they're evaluated by the buildings to see, to see whether or not they come back. I mean, because in that evaluation form, there needs to be a review of the interventions and a review of the positive behaviors and a review of the behaviors that haven't changed to see whether or not that was actually worthwhile having in the building. Because if you've got 80 students, and I'm just picking a number out of a hat, and most of those students have not had a significant change in behavior, then we need to look at having another provider in there, especially if this has been going on for two or three years. So I'm going to piggyback with Ms. Williams and say, a six-month evaluation is not going to be enough because with any intervention, you do need a progress monitoring. But I'd like to see a copy of the principal evaluation as well.
Yeah, I would kind of ask that.
Let me come down to you after I get this down. Yes, ma'am.
The six-month process is a state process. That's not the local process. I'm saying that's what the state requires. I'm not saying that what's done here is just done during six months. That's the state requirement.
So what's done here?
The agencies themselves provide the assessments. They provide the evaluations for the youngsters and determine whether or not, maybe I should say, determine what services are needed.
Do those evaluations get feedback from teachers? Or is it just the counselor and the student 101?
It's, everybody works in concert.
Okay.
I've got three, three things and one is to piggyback. How many providers actually are out there in these schools? How many total providers are in these schools?
We have nine providers.
So there's nine providers that's in every, or in the schools?
No, there are nine providers total.
That's in the schools?
Yes.
And have we wondered, or have we looked and seen if out of these nine providers, are we, is there overlapping services? Meaning, is a few of them providing the same service as another one is?
Okay. When I say nine providers, you have different providers. You don't have more, there's only one school that has more than one provider. So the services that they provide are generally the same kinds of services, the same kinds of services.
Okay. And then, and then going again with the accountability and so forth. And I know with Medicaid dollars, and you can help me out with this as well, but I know that is a very regulated process. I deal with OT and speech services every day in my line of work. And when we're talking about reports done on a quarterly or a monthly or you see something yearly, I know every single time that a speech teacher, a speech professional or an OT sees a child, there is some kind of documentation.
Yes.
So it sounds like there's not a lot of checks and balances with regards to what is being done. I think some of the questions and concerns that's been brought up is, that's been brought up, and it kind of sounds like this could be happening, is that possibly these individuals that's supposed to be servicing these kids aren't necessarily seeing these kids when, as many times or when they're supposed to. And that seems to be the gap here. Because I would think at any time that you wanted to pull up a report on an individual student or individual case, that should be made available.
And let me say this in response to that. The persons who are providing the services, you're right, within that particular organization, the kind of reporting that you're talking about exists. In terms of my role with this, my role historically, since this started, has been one that deals more with the administration piece of it in terms of interviewing the persons who come in, ensuring that they have what is required, that they're licensed, that the staff they bring in are, have the qualifications to do the job that is required, to make sure that the TB test, the background checks, the memorandum of agreement, memorandum of agreement, which was seen by the superintendent and which is housed down here, that all those things are in place. When it comes to the supervision of the school-based staff, once they walk into that... When it comes to the supervision of the school-based staff, once they walk into that building, then the supervision of that staff becomes the responsibility of the building principal working along with the program directors and the, the clinicians and the folk who go in to provide the service.
Well, then maybe we need to just be able to look and see the data, see how successful these programs have been. I mean, and I don't know if that means adding a responsibility on here later or what.
Dr. Bracy wanted to add something from the staff.
I've had experience in, in, in working with day treatment providers, and I think some of the questions that some of the board members you all are raising can be addressed in the MOU. As far as the, the documentation, as far as what type of monitoring you want to see as far as reports, that can be spelled out in the MOU. As far as who's going to be looking at that, reviewing that, that would take first, that would take place firsthand at the building level. I had a conversation, because I know we've discussed this, I talked with Mr. Johnson out at Wilson about it, and he talked about that he's pleased with the agency that he has. He chose the one that he has because not only do they come into the school, but they work with the student at home as well, so that's why he chose that one. So I'm sure that if there were problems with reports and so forth, that, that he would notify, I guess currently now, Ms. Sugars, as far as any issues that would take in place, but as far as making sure that any of this is taking place and that it's occurring, that would fall on me. I would make sure that, that, that would take place. I wouldn't dare want to put board members in the, in the realm of having to be administrators over programs that we have in the division that, that I should be taking care of. So as far as any of that, I can take care of that and make sure that what we need to be observing is taking place, because like I said, the, the questions that are being raised, we can handle that within this MOU. I think the, the biggest concern and question that is when brought to the table initially was what's going on with them, who are they? So I think we've defined that, so what we'll do now is work to make sure that all these other things are, are taking place, and I can give updates as needed to you all.
Let me get rid of Matello first and then you, Ms. Williams.
Yeah, I was going to say that the agencies, they, they do daily progress notes on each individual child. I, I think where the gap just may be is the communication between the actual counselor and maybe the teacher or the principal on individual kids, I think will give us a better understanding of what's, the progress that has happened with each child, and is it working and those sorts of things. But I do know that most, all agencies have to progress notes or to be billed by Medicaid anyways, so I know they're being done. I think it's just a gap between, communication between them and the actual teachers and principals themselves.
Yeah. And, and my concern was that the board be made aware of who's in the schools, what they're doing, the memorandum of understanding, as you just stated, will spell out exactly what is expected, who they're to notify. I'm sure they have to do the progress reports because of Medicaid billing, but many of those students that go into day treatment already have a lot of issues. I mean, do the parents ever get to hear any of this, or is it just with the, the teachers and the principals? And so I, I'm just set off and I'll be done, and you all can say whatever. So we, you know, I, I certainly don't expect the board to be in administration to do any of this. We're bringing it to the attention of the board so we can tighten it up, and certainly have you sign the MOUs. And normally, in the past, any contracts, things like that, come before the board, and we had to vote on them. So that was my question, did we have to do that or whatever? Because if something goes wrong, then we're the ones that catch all the dots and everything else, and we don't know what's going on. Just want to be sure that everything is done in decency and order.
Okay. Last item would be the revenue receipts from the gates. Who understands?
Good evening, Chairman Bradford, Dr. Bracy, and all school board members. I was going to go ahead and provide a brief summary of documents that I have provided. Questions were asked regarding gate funds and the usage at each one of the high schools. So what I've done is an account history based on where we are this year, and I initially provided a summary by high school that showed you that gate funds at each high school are being reported into the respective sports. So gate funds for a football game are going into the football varsity account. Now, when it comes to what expenses are covered using the gate funds, it varies by school, but at the end, athletic account to help cover expenses for other sports within the school where they don't have a gate, and some of those are track, baseball, and tennis. I've also provided the additional detail that was requested, and this is out of the Student Activity Funds financial system. So this gives you the detail of the money that's going into these accounts from gates and what they're being spent on.
Okay. We're going to get a copy of?
Um, you should already have a copy.
She should have.
Okay. She, in other words, she just wants you to get it. I'd like to get another copy.
Did you hear more sense of that?
So it didn't come out. Excuse me. I'm sorry. Quick. I'm Fleming.
Are you referring to the email where we had the schools and about three sentences under each school?
The initial, and I have a copy of initial, which you all have, that's initial, and then I provided through the proper chain that we have the detail.
Okay.
And I brought my copy that I have.
But that was, that was also sent an email?
This should have been sent by email.
But can we, can we receive hard copies?
We didn't get that by email.
Okay.
I haven't seen that.
I don't think we have.
So who was supposed to send it to us?
All of my items go through budget and planning. It was centralized items there.
Still check your email and see if you, if you can actually just send that one out.
Can every board member see a hard copy?
That's what I'm saying, that way we can get a hard copy. Because I don't remember seeing it.
Can we get a copy here?
Sure. That's a copy.
All right, why, why are you doing that? That's the last, that was the last item or comments I can say. Okay, at this point, for, for public purposes, we're going to be ready to go into closed session, and immediately when we come out of closed session, we're going to be adjourned. So for all public purposes, this is the end of the meeting, so for the closed session.